And state of Arizona to be held on Tuesdays at Denver Tech. Two thousand nineteen at five thirty P. M. At the city hall building, nine fifteen South Tolerville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joanie Jacomino.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen.
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein. City staff Theresa Coleman, city manager.
Yes.
Ashley Coronado, city clerk. Jesus Haro, public works director. Al, George Castillo, fire chief. James Ledbetter, city attorney is attending via phone.
Thank you. We have one item here. And that is a discussion on how to proceed with the city hall building. This has been going on for twenty-three months about. And we've gone through many, many different phases in this, the first being where did we actually want to put it? And then after that, due to staff changes, this has been put on the back burner unfortunately. So it's now back on the front burner for us to move forward in making some decisions. This is a work session, so what I intend on doing is we have some people in the audience that have expertise in different areas and want to be heard. I plan on letting them speak. However, I'm going to ask them to keep their remarks as short as possible. If it gets too long and drawn out, I'm going to let you know that I think it's too long and drawn out. At least. So in any event, I just wanted to proceed with kind of the ground rules because it's a work session, it's a little more relaxed or actually quite a bit more relaxed, and we do have people that know what they're talking about. So with that, I want to turn this over to Ms. Coleman, our city manager.
So we have received lots of comments in the form of discussions from folks who could not be present, and some folks who were present may have provided us with some advance information regarding their thoughts about moving forward with your city hall. I did make a follow-up call in regards to a meeting that was held in November of, what year was that, twenty seventeen?
Twenty seventeen. Twenty seventeen.
In twenty seventeen. And did have an opportunity to speak with Jeff Hayes at USDA, and then Stephanie Peavy also reached out to USDA and provided some additional information. If the council would be interested in obtaining some financing through USDA for the construction of a new city hall, USDA would require the design bid build layout for moving forward with the city hall. So I did just want to make you aware of that as part of your discussion, and if you have any other questions, feel free to ask me, but otherwise, I think you have a pretty good range of ideas there, don't you?
Right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
A quick follow-up in my discussions with USDA and Jeff. Funding, if that is what is wished, is available. We have approximately, I'm going to give you a rough figure, two million dollars sitting in the bank that is there. I believe one point seven of that is actually built in, and the rest of that, I believe, has been additions that hasn't been used, such as replacing some of the computers and things like that, which has been done, or that's been done to our regular budget. So having said that, Jeff had indicated that financing was available with the caveat of design bid build, and that it would be at that particular time, it was a thirty-year window, thirty years at four and a half percent. I don't know what it is today, it probably is the same, but nevertheless, that's USDA's. So because we have received all kinds of, all kinds of data coming in, of some people saying that they thought the money should stay in the bank, that we could get better than four and a half percent interest, and that we should finance. Other people saying that the two million dollars was way more than we needed to spend, that we just need some kind of a facility, such as we're in. Others wanting to build the Taj Mahal. So it runs all gammas. And so we have certainly some decisions based on sets of input to us as to how we want to proceed. So we did hear that the city attorney sent us some data on design bid, and which is not the same with design bid build. And what I would like to do is, I'd like to hear from a couple of people in the audience who want to address the specifics of which is the best way for the council to go in design bid, design bid build, or God, there's, as we have, everybody that's been through their packet knows how many variations and possibilities there are. So we need to come up with the best solution for Bisbee and the citizens of Bisbee. So with that, I know that Mr. Hopper wants to address this. So Mr. Hopper, would you, would you like to do that? You're a normal, pretty loud guy, so I think we're okay without a mic.
All right. Oh, thank you very much, and I think you understand my position from when I put the handout at the council meeting last Tuesday evening. What I would like to do is just compare the difference, because I think that's the issue is a little bit of confusion between what design bid build is versus design bid. In the design bid build, you would hire the consultants, primarily architectural engineering team, right in the beginning to start to work with the, with the city to develop a program as to exactly what is needed, and working it with the, with the budget. And once, through a process of inner, inner action between the two, a design is generated, and then construction documents are prepared, and along with those elements is also the preparation by the consulting team of what the budget is, what the cost would be. They're entirely capable of estimating what the cost would be at the time of the design development and the development, preparation of the construction documents. Once those are prepared, then the consulting team would work with the city procurement department in order to put the project out to bid, and they would be advertised in the plan services and in publications to interested contractors. And in those bid documents would be not only the drawings and the specifications, but it would be other requirements such as insurance, and whether or not a bond is required in case the contractor defaulted, then the bonding company would come in and take over the job. So it's more involved than just drawings. It's a complete package that spells out, for example, how the contractor is going to get paid and so forth. So it's, the actual agreement form is rather involved, but it covers a great deal of what the contingencies would be. And then after that, the consulting team, architect engineer, would be monitoring the construction in terms of progress, see whether the work is going along according to the construction documents, prepare, review, pay applications, and so forth. And so the consulting team starts at the very beginning, and then walks, works with the client all throughout the entire process until the project is completed. A design build, you're not, the consulting team is taking a second position to a general contractor. And in order to be able to find out who you want to deal with in terms of the design build process, you would have to do what actually Mr. Ledbetter wrote in his memo, and that is, if I could read this, "To eliminate duplicated processes, the builder will submit a comprehensive proposal in accordance with the city's request for proposal. The request for proposal, which would be prepared by the city, contains a detailed scope of work, including design concepts, technical requirements, and specifications, the time allowed for design and construction, the city's estimate of the project cost, and the deadline for submitting the proposal." So the situation is there. A lot of the things that the architect engineering team would do actually becomes the burden of the city to define what those elements are, so that when they go out with this RFP, request for proposal from contractors, then everybody is building same for same, but it requires a great deal of work on the part of the city. Now, I have done design build, primarily with federal government. And so what I have dealt with in terms of the federal government is either the core of engineers or the facilities management team at either Davis-Monthan or Fort Huachuca has, has the staff involved, the knowledge, they have engineers that deal with this on a daily basis, and they also have architects in some cases. And so they have the technical staff that they would need, and they put out an RFP for design build. And in many cases, these design build specifications are very detailed, down to what kind of floor covering and so forth, but the drawings that are prepared are also very detailed. And so in that case, the architect becomes nothing more than a draftsman. And so the thing is, a lot of the burden is put on the city in order to try to define exactly what they want in order for the two, the contractors to be able to bid the same thing. And then once the contract is, is let to a contractor, then it's also the city's burden in order to verify whether or not the work is being done in compliance with the documents, in addition to the support from the building inspector and public works department. So in a lot of cases, governmental agencies that do not have that expertise end up hiring a third party in order to be able to do that, represent them. And so the idea that design build is going to save money is incorrect. It's going to add risk, and it's also going to possibly ask additional costs. And so that is what the difference is between the two. And obviously, as from what my position is, I believe you should get the professionals on here right in the beginning.
Question.
Are there any questions?
Yes, sir. When you're talking about the, the team, on the design bid build team, is that, is that the A and E team?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so, so I just wanted to make sure, because we've received a, a long document from Al Anderson.
Yeah.
Who's talking about the A and E team, and I wanted to make sure that myself and the council understood that that is.
A and E is architect.
Architect engineer, right.
And so if, in fact, you decide to go with employing the services of an A and E team right from the very beginning, then the proposal that is submitted would be, present the qualifications and of the architect and the engineering team, structural, mechanical, electrical, civil, I mean, it goes on and on, but so that you would know who you were dealing with right from the very beginning.
Yes, please.
It's also, the team also includes the city, the user.
Yes, that's correct.
It's not just the A and E team. It's a collateral effort.
Oh, absolutely.
The architect engineer is an advocate for the city, whereas in a design build, they're an employee of the construction contractor. That's the big difference between the two.
Yeah. So I did bring this as something I'll give to Ms. Coleman, that's the American Institute of Architects standard form of agreement between owner and architect, and I mean, it's just for, for your information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ben, did you have something? And would you, since I introduced him, would you introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Ben Lovely, I'm a Bisbee resident and also a registered architect in the state of Arizona. And Al here has made, I couldn't agree more with how he's presented the contracts. I also am an advocate for design bid build. The way I see it, when you're doing a public project or project that has lots of clients, so like a developer, their only client is themselves, and then they sell the thing. For a city or something, the client is the public and the city itself, so there's at least two clients there. And so what you're going to want is a lot of public input. Now, I realize that's really time-consuming, energy-intensive, and a bit of a pain, but I think it's important to have what Melanie Green started with two years ago and keep that in motion. What she started with was generating a program, which Al mentioned before, that the public can put input to, like, what do you guys want? What should we do? Should we keep the building? Like, what do we want with this? How much space do we need? Those sorts of things are the very first steps for design bid build. And when you do the design to bid, so construction documents, engineering, figuring out the program, figuring out the design, you've got checks and balances there that you can say, no, this is not what we want, we want this thing here, we want this thing here. And with the architect and the engineers and lead, you've got a lot of input and flexibility there. And then, when it comes time to bid and build, then you can go out, RFP, and do that. You can also do that at the beginning before design, too. You can get your architect in that same open and public manner, saying, why don't you submit a couple renders or something for some beginning ideas? We'll review them, select an architect. Or you can do it based on the fee schedule as well, whatever. But so that's, that's kind of the sum of it. You've just got more checks and balances with the design bid build, and you also have a legal framework that is far more robust and has been being used for easily over a hundred years. Everything down to insurance companies, claims, the whole engineering industry and architecture industry and building industry is kind of framed around design bid build. For design build, you know, that's really if you're doing multiple buildings that are all the same, you're a developer, you already know what you want, or you have expertise on hand, which Al alluded to, which we know. But we do have stability now with the new city manager, so that's a good thing. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions to Ben right now?
Okay.
You'll be here, right? Both of you will?
Yeah.
Sit here for a minute.
Okay.
Anybody else in the audience want to address this at this point? No? Okay, so if I'm hearing right, if we look at design build, then the city is involved in the minutia of figuring out what paint we want on the walls, what carpet we want on the floor, what tile we want on the floor, how many doors, and this sort of thing, and then it goes out and in an RFP, and we then get the answer back that what our specifications are will cost X amount. Am I in the ballpark? I'm getting some yeses, okay. And with the design bid build, then we go out with an RFP, RFQ. So we're at the qualifications and perhaps concept. And so we could be getting renderings and qualifications, and that would be for the team, the A and E team, which within the parameters that we provide having to do with monies available, et cetera. And then we would get that information back, and in that proposal, or down the road, they would tell us, this, for this amount of money, this is your choice of floor coverings, this is your, how many doors you're going to have. So I know I'm really trying to simplify it, but I want to make sure that it's simple so I understand it. Am I, basically, okay, I'm getting some yeses, and for the TV audience, we're getting yeses, that's a basic concept. So, no, with that, what do we, what is, where does the council want to discuss? Ms. Jacomino?
Why me?
Well, because you were looking at me. And Lou, and Lou wants to know.
No. This is a fairly complicated issue, and to try to distill it down into terms that everybody can, can understand who's not an architect or an engineer is a very difficult thing to do. But I'd like to start by saying a letter was provided by our legal counsel advocating for design build. And I'm not going to advocate for design build or design bid build.
Are you saying, are you saying something, Jim?
Yeah, well, like, that would be slightly incorrect. As Ms. Coleman correctly stated at the last meeting, she's asked me to overview the concept. It is a council decision, I'm not advocating a position. I've spoken to Mr. Hopper about that at length.
I'm just quoting from the letter, and that was my understanding, that you were advocating for.
No, council decision, I will go whatever direction you wish to go.
Okay, good, we're in agreement then. I'm not advocating for one over the other, but I would like to point out that there are differences between the two that the council needs to be aware of, as do you, Theresa. And they can get you in trouble. You can have a design bid build, you can have a design build, and both of them can end up in litigation. There's no guarantee, unless the user, the owner, has an adequate staff to deal with the project from the beginning. Now, my question to the city manager would be, do you have experience with design build contracts? The administration of design build contracts?
I do, and it was a disaster.
Okay. How about you, Jesus?
I do have experience with that. I would say that with the design bid build, we're going to, and I believe Mr. Hopper talked a little bit about this, is that we're going to get expertise in programming from the very beginning. We can, for, for us to be able to come up with a scope of work with the staff that we have, might be challenging.
Okay. That's my point. You have to have an adequate staff, one with experience in design build, because it's different than design bid build. The RFP is going to be different, okay? The statement of work is going to be different. All of that is going to be different. So I prepared a handout explaining the difference between design bid and design bid build, as simply as I could. And the one element of both that you need to, I'll just read from this. The owner's characteristics that present, predict design build project success are, the owner's construction sophistication must be adequate to precisely define the scope, which you just said. Independent government, inexperienced government agencies are advised against using design build for the first time without experienced consultants. In other words, an architect engineer who can sit down with you and do charrettes with the users and figure out what the alternatives are and what, what the costs are, so that the user can make an adequate or an intelligent decision about which way you want to go. And then you can go either way, you can go design bid, you can go design bid build. But that first element involving the user and a competent, experienced consultant to generate those documents that are needed is vital to the success of the project. And I agree with a lot of what the two gentlemen, the architects, have said here, but I'm not going to advocate for one or the other, because like I said, if you do it right, and you know what you're doing, and you have the right resources on staff, you can do a good job with either, with either form. Design build tends to get things done a little bit quicker, but it doesn't always result in cost savings. That's my ten cents.
Right, and we'll, so the record's clear down, in the very near future, we're going to need you to advocate for it, because you're going to need a vote on it.
Oh, I'll bet, at that point in time, I will, no problem.
Yeah.
I just don't want to influence anybody to benefit on one over the other.
Thank you.
That's why this is a comparison of the advantages, and this is advantages.
And I really appreciate you providing that based on your past expertise.
No, you, okay. So is, I guess my concern is, is there a potential way of determining, whereas it's like, which we're thinking, that which one will have more of a chance to cost us more than the other?
Yeah, her, her question is, is there a way to potentially decide which is going to cost more, bottom line? And you're asking the wrong person. So I'm going to ask Lou, is that something you can answer, or?
I mean, I think that's what.
Well, right, let me, and let me just indicate from my, what I'm looking at, is if we don't have the staff to run a design build project, then it becomes obvious that we have to hire somebody, and it costs money. So I mean, maybe I'm looking at simplistically, but it appears to me that design bid build is, based on our staffing and so forth, is the least potentially expensive method. Mr. Hopper?
When the consulting team, A and E team puts their project out to bid, you're getting the competitive marketplace. You will have a set of requirements, but everybody is bidding in a competitive market in order to get the best price so that they can do the job. With design build, the, the contingency is bid into the project cost, because once you make an agreement with a design build contractor, they have not only their profit and their overhead, but they have the contingency in there in order to cover their rear end, so to speak, if something does not go the way they had planned it. So the chances are, you're going to pay more upfront with a design build setup than you would going with an A and E team.
Thank you. She said, that answers it, Ms. Jacomino. Again, questions down here?
Yes, I do. Actually, I don't have a question. I, unlike councilmember Pollak, I am going to take the position. I think your design bid build is the best way to go, because we don't have the expertise, nor the time. And I'm sure that Jose could probably do, Jose, again, I'm sorry. Hey, this could probably do a very good job, but we don't have the manpower for, and we don't have all of the expertise, plus, we don't have, the people don't have the time to, for all these minutia, all the minutia that would have to be put into it. We need a consultant, we need a consulting team, and with the city being part of that team, we are getting what we're, we're looking for, and getting our information in there self. I say this, but it's no brainer.
Well, it's a little more complicated than that, but.
Well, I know, but still.
Ms. Johns?
So I'm, I feel like we are leaning a little toward design bid build, but I'm looking at the handout that we prepared, and I don't know if you can answer this, it would be Al, but it looks like there's kind of an advantages versus disadvantages, and it looks like litigation is a little bit more common with design bid build. And I wonder if maybe somebody can speak to that.
Jim, is that something you can speak to? Or do you know?
Ben is raising his hand.
Sure. But I, my, I didn't give you the type of question.
I said that it looks like we have an advantages versus disadvantages table here versus design build and design bid build, and it looks like litigation is a little bit more common with design bid build, and I would like, I would just like someone to speak to that.
Yeah, I, I, you're referring to the stuff that came from the Air Force, right?
Yes.
Yes, and that is experientially true, but nonetheless, there are advantages on whichever program you want to go with, and I would just say, your, there's defense available, and a brief. And a worry about possible litigation should not be a driver in your ultimate decision making. It is a factor to consider. But hopefully, we'll all navigate this in ways that can avoid litigation based upon the contracts that are in place. Because likely, I would recommend to you that there be arbitration provisions in your contracts so that you wouldn't be in litigation in the first instance.
Okay, and that's great. We can write the contracts very well. But Ben's coming up to the podium. Maybe you can understand why litigation would be a little bit more common with design bid build.
So actually, the arbitration thing that the attorney just mentioned is a good point because in the AIA contracts, by default, they mentioned you should use arbitration and not litigation. But you can change that, of course. But what could commonly happen with design bid build is a disagreement between the architect claiming the architect drew something with this as the idea. And then the contractor saying, well, let's say the soil wasn't firm enough for these foundations and we need to make the foundations bigger. The architect maybe didn't do a proper soil sample or whatnot. And so a disagreement can happen there. With bid build or design build, you're not going to sue yourself for that problem. So you're going to take that contingency that the client already paid for and adjust the foundations there. So it's kind of two sides of the same coin where you have, yeah, there's a potential for more litigation because there's more moving parts. But the moving parts are also an opportunity to change things and kind of open things up rather than hiding them under the carpet with design build.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
With that comment, then would you say that the design bid build, you have more flexibility, so to speak, in the design itself or in the whole process?
Well, there would be change orders, is what you call it. Where the contractor's like, well, you need changes. And then the architect's like, okay. And so that's where the flexibility would come in. I don't know if one is more or less flexible than the other, but with design bid build, there's more legal hurdles to overcome to make those changes, which are a protection and a pain at the same time.
So you'd have the same flexibility, though, in the design build?
Actually, I don't know. I guess it depends on the relationship between the client, so the city and the contractor. They might not allow changes.
Or it's going to cost you a heck of a lot more if they want to.
And maybe Al might, has more experience than me, but he might be able to speak to that. Where an architect is legally the representative of the client. So the architect can step in on a design bid build and represent the client and say, well, I'm an expert in this and this is really a contractor. Now, that's potentially where you get the trouble. But also, it's also protecting you at the same time. So that's why you need all this knowledge as a city staff and council because you can't tell a design build contractor, you don't have the knowledge to know what they're doing. Whereas when you hire an architect, they have that knowledge and they also know what they designed.
And that's my biggest concern, is that we don't have that type of knowledge on staff or in the city. So to go to a design build, I think we're really putting a big burden on the city and trying to, or having to resolve all the things that do come up. The other thing is, we were talking about the length of time. They said it would take longer for a design bid build than it would for design build.
Yeah, because you're separating out the...
But I mean, does anyone have any idea how much longer we're talking? Are we talking years? Are we talking months or...
Let me just interrupt. When you're talking about longer, you're not talking about longer to construct. You're talking about longer getting ready to construct.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I think...
Correct.
I don't, I don't, see, that is a disadvantage, to be honest with you.
Well, so an obvious length of time increase would be the bidding process. After construction documents are done and bidding documents are done, setting that out to bid, comparing things, voting, you know.
But I think that we need to take that time, too.
And it's the A and E team, is it not, that is helping the city in making the decision on the contract?
If you ask them to, I believe.
Yeah, I'm just, but soon, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the scope of work is...
If they're representing us, then they would...
But I mean, basis does send stuff out to bid all the time. So you might be able to do that in-house. But liability wise, maybe not.
Yeah, yeah. I foresee that we would be looking for outside assistance also. Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Redd?
Yes, sir.
It would be much easier for Mrs. to write a standard solicitation than it would be to write a design bid solicitation. Because from what you said, I have to say you don't have any experience doing that. And they're quite different. And...
Well, that's where legal comes in too. Exactly, exactly. Any other, yes, ma'am?
Well, you know, it may take longer for planning, but I don't see that as a disadvantage. I think it gives us time to absorb and to look over and make sure that all of our ducks are in a row and that we're doing the right thing and we're not making, or somebody's not making, you know, decisions. So I don't think it's a disadvantage.
I don't think anybody's indicated it's a disadvantage. I certainly don't think it's a disadvantage. I think that when we're talking about a couple million dollars of taxpayers' money, that we need to look at it and make sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So I don't have any issues with that.
One of the things I'd like to address to Councilperson Hanson's comment about the architects and engineers. In the design bid build, the architect and the engineer who are registered and certified professionals are the advocate of the city. And they will look out for our interests throughout the entire process. In the design build, the architect engineer is an employee of the construction contractor and therefore caught up in a conflict of interest right from the beginning. They're not looking out for the city's interests. They're doing what the construction contractor tells them he wants them to do. So you have to consider that in weighing the two.
And I find that is a big disadvantage.
Anything else? Yep. Anything else today? Ms. Coleman, do you have anything?
I, you know, I don't have anything related to your conversation. I did want to let you know that a professor with the architecture department at U of A reached out to me. He's bringing seven to eight students to Bisbee on September 12th. And they, their academic assignment for the semester is to design a new city hall for Bisbee. So purely an academic assignment.
Great.
And they had until May to do that?
I think it's a semester assignment.
We always enjoy the U of A and the ASU students and coming down and helping us with whatever they can. Absolutely. So what I'm going to be asking is that we put this on the agenda for Tuesday. And that we make a decision on which concept we want to go on. So we can get this up in the center and move on this. So do be prepared to, if possible, make a decision. If anybody in the audience or here has further documents they want us to go through or if it's anything, we've got a ton of them that we've been going through. And we'll certainly accept anything, any public input whatsoever, having to do with which way to go in the design bid, design bid build in that arena, not what, how many doors we think should be in the city hall at this point. Mr. Higgins?
I have a question.
Yes.
How does USDA money figure into all this? You know, and is, what does it probably play?
The USDA would take your architect, engineering, design and that cost estimate and make you a loan offer based on that cost estimate. You would need to obtain your own construction financing with a guarantee from the USDA to place your permanent financing on the project.
And how they, yeah, there's many, many different ways. But that's a decision, whether we finance or put 2 million out there and have to add 500,000. Yeah, I'm just sort of thinking. Those are decisions for us in the future, after we start on this process and decide which way we're going to go. Okay, so...
I have a question based on the question that you asked. Is the process for USDA, okay, USDA, is that, does it take longer to get that loan than any other loan?
You know, Mr. Hayes did not indicate that. Once we have a figure, we'll go out to three conventional banks to find out what management they would provide. If actually, we find a conventional bank that offers us a better deal than USDA, we would actually want to go in that direction. But that appears to be the only additional step.
Yeah, USDA shopping money, just like any of the banks, you know.
Well, that's what I thought.
Because they've got lots of money in a loan, yeah. So it's, anyway. Anything else?
I move it with you.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second for adjournments. Those in favor signify stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We can adjourn.